Okay, the public hearing scheduled for six thirty-five is called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrada?
Here.
Mrs. Halston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Has proper legal notice been given for this hearing?
Notice of a public hearing was published in the Springfield News-Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city advertising the city's city commission's review and discussion of the two thousand and twenty-six tax budget. Attached here too is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on May nineteen twenty twenty-five.
I move that communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minutes, and filed.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Halston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Staff report?
Hey. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight marks the formal beginning of our two thousand and twenty-six budget process with the presentation of the tax budget. But in many ways, this is not a new conversation. It is an update on a financial story we've been following closely since the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-five budget last fall, and our deeper discussion at the commission retreat this spring.
Can we please have quiet in the room, ma'am? Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Kitty.
This presentation will be a bit different than past tax budget presentations as we are at a critical juncture. Income tax revenue, which is the backbone of our general fund, has flattened. After years of strong growth post-pandemic, the rebound is behind us. From two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, we saw a combined income tax revenue increase of over nine point two million dollars in those two years. But from two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five year-to-date, that growth has slowed significantly, adding just three million dollars in total over that almost two-and-a-half-year period. Again, the prior two years was nine million dollars compared to that three million. The combination of permanent changes to remote work tax law, slower wage growth, and broader economic uncertainty has left us more financially exposed. At the same time, the one-time federal relief funds that helped us bridge prior gap with CARES Act funding and American Rescue Plan Act funding are exhausted. Our general fund is under real strain. For two thousand and twenty-five, we relied on more than five million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funds to balance the general fund budget. Without those temporary dollars, we would have seen immediate cuts to services. There is no separate rainy day fund to soften these shocks. When income tax declines, the impact is quickly felt in our day-to-day operations. That said, we are not without signs of progress. Our transition to the Regional Income Tax Agency, or RITA, for income tax collection will strengthen compliance and collections. Residential development and economic growth are underway across the city. But these efforts take time to generate sustained recurring revenue. And until they do, we must hold the line on spending, focus on core services, and continue the work of identifying efficiencies wherever possible. The tax budget provides an early look at our revenue outlook for two thousand and twenty-six. It is. Thank you. So this next slide just depicts our timeline for the budget. So, um, beginning in April and May, we are looking at revenues, which is the tax budget. Um, that commission must adopt by July fifteenth, and then going into the coming months throughout July, August, September, October, we are having those internal meetings with departments. Um, they are submitting their budget request, um, for their expenditure budget. Again, tonight, we're talking revenues. Um, we are required by November first to have the city manager's preliminary budget on file, um, that is per-hour charter. Um, and then in mid-November, we are having those open to the public meetings with commission, um, for two evenings in November to discuss the budget for the following year. I'm in early December, we have a hearing similar to this for the public to discuss the two thousand and twenty-six budget. In mid-December, we're bringing back that appropriation ordinance, which is the expenditure budget for the following year. Um, and then, as I mentioned, at, um, retreat in the following year in the early spring, which we just had for discussion of the two thousand and twenty-five budget, we are doing, um, that retreat update and forecasting, um, out three years. Move to this next slide. So again, tonight, we're talking revenues. The tax budget is a revenue document. You may be asking yourself again why we're estimating two thousand and twenty-six revenues in June. Um, again, that is because we are required by Ohio revised code to have this on file by July fifteenth of each year. So the tax budget serves three purposes. It establishes, um, or requests millage for real estate tax collections, which I'll discuss on the next slide. It establishes the base of revenue estimates for the upcoming budget year. Um, and it combines estimated revenues and estimates with our end-of-year cash, establishing the maximum appropriation capacity in the upcoming appropriation budget. Essentially, what that means is this revenue document sets our expenditure appropriations that we've been bring back to you at the end of the year. Um, for those expenses, we cannot exceed the revenues that we are projecting and that you are approving tonight within the tax budget. So again, for the general fund, the main dominant source of revenue is income tax. However, the city does receive real estate taxes for a few specific or earmarked purposes. The special police levy is a three-mills levy, um, generates a little over three million dollars, um, and funds, um, part of our police operations. So for perspective, with that three million dollars, police's overall operating budget is just over twenty million dollars, so the majority of that is funded by the general fund. Police and fire pension at point six mills is just an old police and fire pension debt fund. Um, and then the conservancy district at point four mills is simply just a pass-through to the conservancy district. Um, you'll notice at the bottom here that the two thousand and twenty-five total assessed valuations are at one point oh-two-six billion. Um, that number is up about fourteen million dollars compared to two thousand and twenty-four. Moving on to the next slide, we'll look at general fund estimated revenues. Um, our reliance on income tax as the city's primary revenue source continues to grow, is now up to eighty-one percent of general fund revenues. When we presented the tax budget this time last year, we assumed a three-point-five increase, three-point-five percent increase in income tax for two thousand and twenty-five. Today, we're tracking flat at zero percent, and have already seen two months of year-over-year decline out of the first five full months of the year. That level of decline hasn't occurred since the early days of the COVID shutdown, and before that, not since prior to the passage of the point-four percent income tax levy. For two thousand and twenty-six, we're projecting a cautious two-point-five percent increase. For comparative purposes, each percent equals roughly five hundred thousand dollars. That projection reflects cautious optimism, a hope that we begin to see a balance between ongoing economic uncertainty, signs of local growth, and the positive impact of our transition to RITA and their enhanced collection effort with our income tax. Interest remains a flat two percent of the general fund budget. Fines, licenses, and charges is at six percent, which remains comparative to prior years. This includes, um, things like building permits and municipal court fines. Um, other shared taxes, which is at a hundred thousand dollars or less than one percent of the general fund budget, includes liquor and cigarette tax, which remains relatively flat. The local government fund, so at its highest, combined with the estate tax, generated over five million dollars annually and accounted for over ten percent of our revenue in the general fund. That percentage is now at three percent. Um, so the city continues to advocate for the full restoration of the local government fund as that would decrease our reliance on income tax revenue. All other includes reimbursements from other funds back to the general fund for administrative services provided to other funds. So this includes reimbursement from funds where ratepayers are paying for services, like our water and sewer fund. Um, and then some of the grant funds that we received, we've talked a lot about the community development block grant and those HUD dollars, um, for reimbursement to the general fund for those staff hours from those grant funds. So as part of our tax but tax budget process, we also evaluate projected expenditures for the upcoming year. Typically, that starts with the current year's budget and factors in known cost increases. But if we were to follow that standard approach for two thousand and twenty-six, we'd be staring down a projected deficit of four point seven million dollars in two thousand and twenty-six. That's simply not an option. We've already taken some cost-saving steps. More than three million dollars in cuts have been made to the two thousand and twenty-five budget, reductions that are being felt across departments. But that won't be enough. Additional cuts will follow as we prepare the full two thousand and twenty-six expense budget, that and that will reshape how we operate. The two thousand and twenty-six tax budget reflects that fiscal reality, reflects that fiscal reality. Instead of projecting sixty-three point four million in general fund expenditures, we've reduced that to fifty-eight point nine million dollars. These are not minor adjustments. They are strategic necessary actions to ensure we can preserve the most essential services. The path ahead requires continued discipline, prioritization, and a clear focus on protecting core services for our residents who depend on them. On this next slide for major operating and capital funds, as you've already seen on the real estate taxes slide, the special police levy includes the property tax amount along with the subsidy from the general fund to support that fund um, at two percent of our overall major operating and capital funds revenue, which totaled just shy of one hundred and thirty-one million dollars. Utility funds include charges for services for water, sewer, and stormwater. This is up eight percent or two point six million dollars compared to the prior year due to legislated rate increases. The street fund, which is primarily, which is mainly gasoline tax, funds our streets and traffic divisions, represents four point six million dollars roughly, or four percent of that overall revenue. The permanent improvement fund is supported by ten percent of every income tax dollar with the remaining ninety percent going to the general fund. So in past years, we've supplemented this fund substantially from the general fund with an additional, um, transfer um, in order for us to support critical capital improvement. That is not reflected in this year's tax budget for two thousand and twenty-six. This is one of the several intentional reductions made to help close the general fund gap and focus our limited resources on sustaining essential operations. The general fund projected at fifty-eight million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, the total for major operating funds to nearly the one hundred and thirty-one million, as already stated. Um, in two thousand and twenty-four, just to note, we moved the budget for the fire division from the general fund to, um, entirely in that fire division service enhancement fund that you see on the screen, fifteen point seven million of the fifty-eight point seven million dollars in general fund revenues. Of that nineteen point three million dollars, um, that's up there for the fire division service enhancement fund, fifteen point seven is a subsidy transfer of that nineteen point three from the general fund to support the fire division service enhancement fund. So this is our last slide, and it highlights how deeply the city depends on income tax revenue to fund general fund operations. For two thousand and twenty-six, income tax again makes up approximately eighty point eight-three percent of our general fund revenue. And just a few, um, important notes to help explain some fluctuations in this chart for context. Um, so looking at two thousand and twenty-five, this includes a one-time accounting shift due to our transition to the Regional Income Tax Agency. Because we operate on a cash basis, um, income tax collected in December will now be recorded in January of the following year. We were, we would have previously recorded that in December. So only eleven months of collections appear in two thousand and twenty-five. This makes the increase look larger than the two point five percent increase that we're projecting in income tax revenue, um, in two thousand and twenty-six. Um, however, that is because two thousand and twenty-six reflects a full twelve-month cycle. While the transition to RITA means that two thousand and twenty-five will only reflect those eleven months of income tax revenue due to cash basis accounting and timing of the December receipts, um, we believe that this was the right and necessary move for the city. The change was not made lightly, as we've discussed. Partnering with RITA ensures we are fully compliant with our income tax ordinance ordinance and helps us maximize collections, making sure the city receives every income, income tax dollar that it is owed. Um, and that's the revenue that allows us to carry out those core services that our community relies on every day. Two thousand and twenty-four, the anomaly here is that one-time American Rescue Plan Act revenue replacement dollars of roughly five million, it throws off that percentage a bit. Two thousand and twenty-three reflects reimbursements related to grants that we received for the National Advanced Air Mobility Center of Excellence Project, Excellence Project out at the airport. Um, and then two thousand and twenty was bolstered by, um, some of those COVID CARES Act dollar salary reimbursement. Um, so despite those one-time impacts, the message remains the same. Income tax is our primary revenue source, and the city's financial stability is directly tied to its performance. and the city's financial stability is directly tied to its performance. Again, just reflecting that we're truly grateful and we'd be in a much dire situation if not for the residents of Springfield for renewing the .4% income tax levy. And it continues to make core services like police, fire EMS, street maintenance, thinking of our neighborhood streets paving program, and community development possible. You'll also see on tonight's agenda a supplemental appropriation item that reflects the more than $3 million in budget reductions already made in 2025 that I brought up at the beginning of the presentation. These reductions are not temporary. They're part of a broader shift in how we allocate limited resources to preserve essential services. So the path forward is clear. We must continue to approach the budget season with discipline, focus, and a deep commitment to protecting what matters most. We'll return in November with a full budget proposal for 2026. That'll be our expenditure budget and an update on revenues. And that will be centered on fiscal responsibility, sustainability of essential services, and our continued commitment to move Springfield forward together. With that, that concludes the presentation. I'll take any questions.
Where are we in comparison to other legacy cities in Ohio with similar population scope?
Certainly, Mayor. So communities across the state of Ohio are feeling the reduction in income tax revenue. Rita serves over 400 member municipalities. And for the first time this past quarter, they sent out a notice to all members that they are noticing a trend and a decline in the collection of income tax revenue. There was a recent survey that was conducted among city managers and cities like Dayton, for example, a 4.5% decrease in income tax revenue. Troy has a decrease in income tax revenue. A lot of the surrounding communities are seeing declines in income tax revenue just simply due to the economic climate.
This is why you'll hear sometimes we'll talk about we go to the state level and go to the state house and talk about, you know, kind of speaking against unfunded mandates and things that could bankrupt the city. These are unfunded mandates or things that are handed down by state legislators to municipalities that they must pay for, basically, and very difficult to comply with those and to take care of those. You also mentioned, you know, I think we've looked at things with discipline and with scrutiny over time. We're just, when you're facing this type of reduction, you have to be more vigilant in your, in looking at these numbers, correct?
Certainly, I think there's a balance. And when I say we don't have a rainy day fund and looking at our ending cash balances for the end of the year, there's also something to be said in investing those dollars back into the community, which we have certainly done in conjunction with those American Rescue Plan Act dollars. So there's something to be said for sitting on a larger reserve balance versus investing those dollars back into the community. And certainly seeing over the past several years, from the last recession, where we weren't able to make capital improvements that became dire and necessary. We have been able to invest back into those projects. It's just now we find ourselves pumping the brakes a bit and holding the line and going back to evaluating those core services and how we provide those core services.
So one of the ways we use the American Rescue Act dollars to move forward the community and also not be a future burden on citizens and taxpayers is investing in the three firehouses that we're building currently. And this would have turned into something, you know, the firehouses that we've replaced are 50 years or greater old, is that correct, each? We dedicated another one today. And so this is, it's just something where that would have been a burden in the future. We would have faced losing firefighters because they didn't want to work in unsafe facilities. We would have been, we would have been rehabbing facilities that shouldn't be. They should just be tore down like we have done it. So it was a good decision to do that and invest those monies. What was that, what was that number? Is that 18 million, am I right about that?
With fire for the fire stations, that was just over $17 million. And then in addition for fire, we were able to replace some pumper trucks and invest in some necessary equipment for them as well with the fire department using those American Rescue Plan Act dollars.
And that's just an example. We used a lot of other, the departments received enhancements, but that's one of the major ones that would have faced taxpayers. Other comments and questions from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
So essentially, what we have here is a situation, and I appreciate you and Ryan and other staff tracking this and bringing us to our attention now as opposed to waiting and let us get deeper and deeper into debt and the problem. And this is, if you think about it, almost at a personal level. We've got to increase revenue, or we've got to decrease expenditures, or we've got to do a little of both. That's what it's going to come down to. Increase revenue, and the state has not been helping us there. And I know my friends in the General Assembly will not say kind words about me, but they took away local government fund money, and we've reduced from 6% to 3% of our budget coming from the state of Ohio through the local government fund problem or program rather. And then they passed some laws in terms of restricting who we collected income tax money for. So the state has not helped with this problem. Not at all on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we've all prayed the price for high prices in our streets, equipment we buy, everything. So now we're going to have to cut back. And again, I appreciate you bringing this to us now so we can act on it. And then, as we put together the budget for FY26, which will kick off January 1st, we can have a budget that we can live with and not bankrupt this city. I also want to make one other point. Were it not for the people of Springfield approving the income tax levy, we wouldn't be even here today. We would have been bankrupt some time ago. So to the citizens of Springfield who voted for that, all I can say is thank you. We've been able to improve service, both efficiency and effectiveness in this city, and we owe it all to you and your willingness to stand up for this city. Thank you very much.
Comments from the audience on this hearing only? Is there a motion to conclude this hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Hearing scheduled for 6:50 is called to order. Clerk, clerk, call the roll again, please.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Has proper legal notice been given for this hearing?
Notice of a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed change in zoning for 0.146 acres located at 1109 Kenton Street from CC2 Community Commercial District to RM12 Low Density Multifamily Residence District was published in the Springfield News-Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached here too is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on May 5, 2025.
I move that the communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minutes, and filed.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Staff report?
Good evening, everyone. The applicant here wishes to rezone the subject parcel from commercial to residential zoning district. There are two structures on this parcel. The one fronting Kenton Street was a tavern or bar and built in 1936. The one fronting Elder Street is a two-unit dwelling built in 1940. There were no certificate of occupancy records found for these, and the commercial structure shows as unoccupied on the county auditor's website. The current commercial zoning district does not provide the option to have multiple duplexes or residences at this parcel. The owner is requesting the proposed zoning district to permit for duplexes on the parcel. A zoning map of 1975 shows the subject parcel was zoned as limited business district, and the parcel is part of a subdivision plant. The Clark County Comprehensive Plan shows the character area as mixed-use low intensity. The proposed high-density residential zoning aligns with future character area and will also complement the surrounding area as properties surrounding the south and west are also residential high-density. Kenton Street is classified as 60-feet-wide collector public right-of-way, and Elder Street is classified as local road by Clark County Thoroughfare Plan. There is a 12-foot public alley running at the back of this parcel. Return reports from city staff state no objections and recommend approval. City Planning and Zoning Division recommends approval with a few comments. This request was heard by City Planning Board prior to adoption of the 2025 zoning code. So this request will be rezoning to RHD High Density Residential District. The requested RHD district provides a range of housing options, including duplexes and apartments. Any new construction or alterations will need to comply with building setbacks, height, and other site features as applicable. And the overall staff recommendation is approval of applicant's request to rezone from a community or a commercial district to a residential district. The applicant's request was recommended approval by City Planning Board as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are comments or questions from commission? Dr. Estrop?
Have there been any objections filed before tonight's meeting?
No objections.
The other thing I wanted to comment on, one of the third, one of the things we heard come out of the Engage Neighborhood Study was the desire of many residents in that area to have more entrepreneurial opportunities along some of the major thoroughfares there. So this would seem to meet that goal of creating an opportunity for more entrepreneurial work in this engaged neighborhood. Thank you.
Comments from the audience on this hearing only? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Hearing scheduled for 6:55 is called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Has proper legal notice been given to this hearing?
Notice of a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed change in zoning for 0.21 acres located at 1351, 1353 South Limestone Street from RM12 Low Density Multifamily Residence District to CN2 Neighborhood Commercial District was published in the Springfield News-Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached here too is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on May 5, 2025.
I move that the communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minutes, and filed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Staff report?
Applicant here wishes to rezone the subject parcel from residential to commercial zoning district. The structures on this parcel were demolished in 2023, and the parcel is currently vacant. The current residential zoning allows for residential uses but does not provide options to have commercial uses. The owner is requesting the proposed neighborhood commercial district to have a barber shop. Zoning map of 1975 shows the subject parcel was zoned apartment residence district, and the parcel is also part of plant. The Clark County Comprehensive Plan shows this area as traditional neighborhood high-intensity. Small-scale retail and office uses are envisioned for this area, and a CNC or CN2 district will complement the surrounding. South Limestone Street is classified as 100-feet-wide primary arterial public right-of-way, and East Perrin Avenue is classified as local road by Clark County Thoroughfare Plan. There is a 16-feet public alley running north-south of this parcel. Similar to the previous case, this request was also heard by the City Planning Board prior to adoption of the 2025 zoning code. So this request will be rezoning to a CNC or Commercial Neighborhood District. And the requested CNC district provides the option to have a barber shop at this location. Return reports from city staff state no objections and recommends approval. And City Planning and Zoning Division has recommended approval with a few comments. The proposed zoning district complements the surrounding areas, and if the rezoning request is approved by City Commission, any new structures, accessory uses, or site improvements will have to comply with the zoning requirements. There are a few notes as well for the owner or applicant. No vehicles can be parked on unpaved surfaces. Accessory structures such as fences, garages, and swimming pools cannot be constructed prior to primary uses or structures. And the applicant's request was recommended approval by the City Planning Board as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any comments from commission? Dr. Estrop?
Did we receive any complaints or concerns prior to tonight's meeting?
No complaints.
I also want to comment that this illustrates another entrepreneurial effort. We talked initially the previous proposal about housing and entrepreneurialism. This is directly new business entrepreneurial effort. So I applaud the development, particularly in the inner city, where we've been working for some time to provide more infill housing and more entrepreneurial effort around commercial enterprises. So we want to see more of these. Thank you.
The comments from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Okay, the formal meeting of city commissions called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Father, just ask for your peace in this community. Ask that you would give us wisdom, integrity as decisions govern this in your name, men.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
I'm staying. Wasn't here the last meeting. Okay. Springfield City Commission remains committed to fostering a respectful and productive environment for public engagement. Public comments are held at the beginning of each legislative meeting following the approval of previous minutes. Those wishing to speak must complete a public comment card, provide their name and address, and present a state-issued ID or driver's license. Only residents of Springfield and Clark County are eligible to speak. Those cards must be submitted within 15 minutes after the meetings start. Providing false information will result in an individual being barred from the current meeting and the next meeting to speak. While we fully respect First Amendment rights, the commission reserves the right to regulate the time, place, and manner comments to maintain order. Disruptions or conduct that interferes with the meeting will not be tolerated. Any individual removed or disruptive behavior after three occasions will be considered trespass and barred from future meetings. Commissioners and staff are listening, taking notes, and following up on comments and ready to follow up on comments. Question raised during public comment period time will be addressed during the meeting following the public comments. If there's additional need to research these items, then the staff, appropriate staff members will follow up. with the individuals. And we will also post these answers on our website within the next few business days. We'll start with comments and we'll ask Mrs. Clara Copeland to go to the microphone.
Not sure why I'm blessed to be first, but here I am. First, a big celebration because those of us on the south side now know that South Yellow Springs is done. And it is beautiful. And so Brian did a happy dance when Dur Road was was done. So I kind of thought we might get another happy dance.
Oh, for sure.
Anyway, South Yellow Springs is done and going both ways. So thank you for that, especially to the Fulton staff and parents who had two years of working around that. So just wanted to say thank you for that. I also want to say thank you for our police officers. When there is a rally out here, they're just a presence, a support presence. And I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate them being here tonight and when we're needed. Now I have a couple of questions. On South Center Street, there was a huge fire this winter and two people died. And the house is still standing and I feel for the people on each side who keeps their grass mowed and their house looking nice. And and the burned structure looks the way it did that day after. And I don't understand the process. How how does that happen? So that's my question. How does it? How? Why are we waiting for it to come down? Second one. I was here for Project Jericho's celebration the other day and sat down with a couple that live in my area. And they, the woman asked me a question because one time she had driven by when I was getting the numbers off of a street light that had burned out. And so they're aware of two street lights that have burned out and her husband was trying to get the numbers and trying to figure out where to report it. And wasn't having any luck and called and didn't get any support. So what do we do when a street light's burned out? And then the other one is a question about the drains in our streets. Down from my daughter's house, the drain was growing things. And so I told my grandson that we needed to work on that. We got two buckets of stuff off of that drain and dirt this high and things growing. And when we were finishing up, a fellow in a truck drove by and said, you know, the city will do that. And I said, they will. He said, you just have to call them. So those are my questions tonight.
We will have answers. Thanks, you, Ms. Copeland. Diane Daniels?
Good evening. History Part Three. Rational conclusion from Resolution five eight four four dated July twenty second, two thousand fourteen. This is for heritage residents who have left the city. Number seven. Whereas an order that such a stance on immigrants and immigrant owned businesses can be fostered and accepted at the earliest possible moment thereby preserving the public peace, health, safety, and property, it is necessary that this resolution or blueprint become effective immediately now therefore. Be resolved by the City Commission of the City of Springfield, two thousand fourteen of Ohio, at least four of its members concurring. What follows is a five part blueprint on how this city would address immigrant issues. Section one, that the City of Springfield, Ohio joins cities like Dayton and Columbus that have formed a voluntary network of immigrant friendly communities called Global Great Lakes and Welcoming America, a George Soros Open Society funded organization. In October, two thousand twenty three, this was pointed out to you of this unholy alliance and was either denied as existing and or the current City Commission feigned following the tenants of Welcoming America. Section two, that the Commission declares the City of Springfield, Ohio welcoming to immigrant and immigrant owned businesses. That was the only thing that needed to be said, nothing else. Number three, that the City Commission vows to maintain and adopt policies that promote the inclusion and integration of immigrants within the community, assisting them in the pursuit of the American dream, thus improving them to become a viable part of the area's economic base. As we clearly see, this has not happened. Section four, that the City Commission encourages the facilitation of open and civil dialogue about strategies the Springfield community can practice and promote to see that immigrants achieve the highest value of hospitality and free enterprise. Let's look at those two words. Hospitality, food, lodging, and transportation, all for free. Free enterprise, an economic system where private individuals and businesses own the means of production and make economic decisions. This is key with minimal government intervention. What does this mean for Springfield? Well, it does mean no contractor of record needed for construction, no permits for construction needed, no licenses needed, and no inspections necessary if you are an immigrant owned business. Number five, that by the means of the emergency set forth and defined in the preamble, what freaking emergency? Here to this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately, July twenty second, two thousand fourteen. While you folks up there are not the authors of that document, you are certainly the executors of that resolution.
Mike Lyons?
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Mike Lyons and I represent the Clark County Solar Alliance. We are an organization of homeowners that have installed solar panels on our homes. We are motivated by climate change, saving money, and providing accurate information about solar energy. Climate change brought us to solar energy, but we know that money talks the loudest. So I'll begin with that and my own family's experience. For the three years prior to installing solar panels, our electric bill averaged a hundred and nine dollars and thirty one cent. Our current electric bill is a minus nine dollars and ninety two cent. That's right, we have a credit. These savings are available to everyone, including the City of Springfield. Of course, money is tied for the city and solar panels require considerable upfront investment. Understood? The city would have to find some money. So where do we start? Well, the Clark County Solar Alliance has a suggestion. We recommend that the City of Springfield join an organization called Power a Clean Future Ohio, P C F O. This is how they describe themselves on their website. Power a Clean Future Ohio is a five oh one through C three nonprofit organization, building a clean energy future for all Ohio communities by engaging directly with local governments across the state. We equip local leaders with tools and resources, empowering them to create and implement carbon reduction plans that are achievable, measurable, equitable, and economic. Now, Power a Clean Future Ohio can help with project feasibility studies. They can assist communities in analyzing future costs brought on by climate change. They have technical people and consultants. They can help find funding and with grant writing. They can help determine if a community is energy future ready community and suggest ways to get ready. And joining a Power a Clean Future Ohio does not cost the city anything. It's free. They're willing to help. We realize that the that the community support is, we realize that community support is necessary moving in the direction we are suggesting. P C F O has a list of seventy two partners on their website, consisting of environmental groups, businesses, foundations, chambers of commerce, concern group, health organizations, and land bank. I'm sure many of these organizations in Springfield, some that are in Springfield, would come forward with the city to signal a desire to join P C F O. Unless you think that Springfield would be out there on its own and join P C F O, there are over fifty communities in Ohio that have already joined P C F O, including Dayton, Fairborn, Cincinnati, Toledo, Cleveland, and Akron, just to name a few. Finally, we have to acknowledge climate change and our responsibility in mitigating its effects. We can't just wait for the federal government or the state government or big corporations to act. We are here at the local level and we must do our part.
Thank you for your information. Your time is up. Very valuable information. Appreciate that. Darlene Yearley? Ely?
Okay. Conservatives have no voice in our state or our city. I have several articles here. Our political representatives that prefer representing and supporting non citizens. Our newspapers has a written, has a writer for liberals, Jessica Oroso. Why not for conservatives? My purpose at the No Kings Rally was to show support for my God, my country, and my president. I went with the goal to not engage with the protesters. I purposely did not wear my Trump apparel. I purposely selected a small space to separate myself from them. I was harassed, insulted, cussed at, criticized, and baited to start a fight. I was followed by different people, including a lady with a megaphone, trying to get me to argue. I was accused by a lady of trying to hit her with my flag, which had a hollow plastic stem. I told her, no, I was not even close enough to hit her. A policewoman came to that corner. I tried to tell her my situation. She had a lot of advice for me to avoid conflict. Me. When I pushed that, I had no safe place. She did go to a corner with a few people, talked to them, and I got a safe area. Never saw her again until I did a stupid but only choice desperate action. A man across from my corner began burning a substance and waving it toward me. After some time of this, I asked him politely to stop. He refused. People began crowding me out again to the point that my shoes were on the edge of the curb. Two young men came and stood directly to my left and each deliberately held a poster, board sign, directly in my vision of the street to my left. I accidentally dropped a flag in front of one of them and had to stop into the street to get it, step into the street to get it. No offer to help. I had been there in the hot sun two and a half hours. I had run out of water and endured humiliation the whole time. I was feeling threatened. I called the police department, but the noise was so loud I couldn't hear anything. And the sun was so bright I couldn't see my screen. I panicked and called nine one one. Later, two officers came slowly strolling up the other side of the street. The first time I encountered an officer since I was directed to what was supposed to be a safe corner. The female officer I talked to before angrily approached me and asked me if I had an emergency. I tried to explain my situation, but she continued to threaten me with being arrested. This was a very one way conversation that was very intimidating. She informed me that several people complained that I tried to hit them with a flag. When I said I did not, she basically told me that if an adult chose to walk into my waving flag in my space, that I was responsible. As for the man with the smoke, she had, said he had a right and I could leave. I asked her if she was anti-Trump. She just glared at me. She did not deny nor say I'm non partisan. I was so flustered and losing composure that I told her to leave. She walked over to another officer. I non threateningly walked over to them to tell her I had asked the smoke man politely what she instructed me to do earlier. She said, stop following her or I'd be in trouble. At seventy five years old, beginning to dehydrate and feeling unsafe, I left. My freedom of speech and my safety was being denied. After the first incident, no one from the police department came to follow up. Our police, at least that police.
Darlene, your time's up. Thank you. Chris Michaels?
I'll finish it next.
As I said, my name is Chris Michaels. I am from East U Heights. I'd first like to address the zoning of the Anex property. At the time it was Anex, it was R eight. When we came on May twentieth, the mayor said that it was going to be R L D. We went to the Moorfield Township Meeting and the trustees told us that it would be R two. A bunch of us researched that and that is a duplex or a small home on a small property. Now, I'm just going to say that Tracy Craig on May twentieth said the subdivision would match the surrounding homes and price point to maintain consistency and alignment of the area. We need to confirm these are going to be detached, single family homes that are going to be owned and not rented. The second reason I'm here is a petition that everybody in East U Heights signed. We do not want Granada Drive open to through traffic from the proposed subdivision down Granada Drive. People racing through. We do not have streetlights. We do not have sidewalks. We have people walking twenty four seven, kids riding their bikes, people walking their dogs, children playing in their street in this, you know, in their yards by the road. And opening up that is going to be an accident waiting to happen. And is Mr. Chester going to be held accountable if somebody's killed or hurt? Are we gonna, is he gonna be held accountable if we have ruts in our yards, our mailboxes are knocked down by crazy drivers? Because right now we hear people racing down Route Four. You, Brian, said that that the area would not impede or affect surrounding properties. Well, that is us. And if you open up Granada Drive and allow that to happen, that's going to affect our properties. My driveway ends on Granada Drive. There's about fifteen, twelve houses on Granada Drive that we enter and exit our driveway on Granada Drive. If there's construction, how are we going to be able to get in and out of our driveway? I want to help. I want, I would personally like to hold Mr. Chester accountable if an ambulance can't drive up my driveway. He chose that property. He knew the pros and cons. He knew the ins and outs, the ups and downs, the good, bad, and the ugly. I feel that he should be held accountable for finding the in and out that does not affect us. We are a safe neighborhood, been that way for sixty plus years. And I'd like to give you the petition. Do you want me to walk it up there? How do you want me to?
I don't get it.
And I think my time has passed, probably. Has it?
Yeah.
It says I still have seven minutes.
Six, five. Thank you for your information. Cindy Longberry?
Could I call up Cindy? Thank you. Yeah, I'm Cindy.
Okay.
First off, the letter that was given to you by one of our retirees. If you could hand one of those to each one of the commissioners. That was the letter, I believe. Is that right, Kevin? That was given to Jason, Jason Villa. And we never got a response from it. I work for SCAT.
Excuse me. Could you get a little closer to the mic? I'm having some difficulty hearing you.
Is that fine? Can I reclaim my time then?
Sure. Thank you.
I work for SCAT, the Public Area Transit. I have a paper to go by here, but I'm also just going to say we were blindsided two months ago about you guys going to micro transit. And the public was blindsided as well. And we've asked for answers. We've given phone calls. Nobody's accepted our phone calls. Our company has called Mr. Villa. They have showed up in person and he would not speak to them. You know, I mean, we are in limbo. We don't know where our jobs are. The public wants to know what is going to happen. You know, how is this going to work well for them when our buses can carry up to twenty five people plus ADA, meaning, you know, grocery cart, as far as utility cart, walkers, wheelchairs, you know, ramps that go out. We can accommodate two wheelchair. Those vans can accommodate one. Is everybody going to be ADA certified? You know, are they going to be willing to give the time that we do with our passengers? Yes, we don't have a lot of time on our route, but we take that time because we are a small community. And, you know, talk to these people. They were supposed to go out to all these nursing homes, the high rises. All those were canceled. And some of them didn't even know about it. How are these elderly people going to do that? They rely on us. And now they're going to have to wait in line for, you know, a van that's not going to pick them up in front of their building or, you know, we don't know what's going to happen to paratransit or dial right, as some people call it. We have concerns. And if we are going to, what's going to happen? Are we going to be grandfathered in through the thirteen C law? You know, where everything is going to remain the same, our retirement, our pay, everything. But right now we are, I'm working fifty hours a week because we don't have people that can come in because our company won't hire people because they don't know what you guys are doing. And plus, I'm taking care of my elderly father. You know, we can go down the list, but all of us are putting in overtime, all of us. And we just want answers. You know, do we need to go look for another job? Are you waiting for us to walk away? I'm not walking away. I have a commitment to my passengers.
Thank you. We'll get some answers for you. Stephen Foster?
I hear some people my age or older say they've lived here thirty years and know what's best for the city.
Could you speak in the microphones? Thank you so much.
I'm sixty five years old. I've lived in Springfield all my life. The majority of it less than twenty minutes from this very building. I remember when this building didn't even exist. I've lived in the West End, East End, North End, and South End. I've watched Springfield grow and shrink and grow again, tear down and rebuild. My mom moved. My mom moved here in 1940. My parents met at Pearl Collier. My uncle was city finance director in the 60s. My aunt taught English at Clark Jr. High. My grandma played the organ at Maiden Lane Church to God. My roots run deep. The childhood me would not recognize the Springfield I'm standing in now. I've seen a lot of changes in the Rose City. I've watched these commission meetings. There's been many times recently I've wanted to stand here and speak and thought better of, but I can't remain silent anymore. Springfield has a problem. Not cats, not geese. We need to address the elephant in the room. It's coming. You know it is. The end of TPS, the ICE raids, the deportations, and Springfield will be on world news again. How will Ground Zero and the immigration debate react? Will Nate Higgers and his blood tribe start cosplaying as ICE? I bet Diana will be interviewed by Fox News. You canceled Culture Fest. I know you don't want to lose those federal-funding dollars because of that stupid DEI, but I'll bet we have Mustard Fest. I'm glad you've decided to cooperate. You're just following orders, right? That didn't work 80 years ago, and it won't work now. Do better, be better. It's a scenario that's played out throughout history many times. I ask all of you, not only the commissioners, but every elected official that hears this. Everyone in this administration will be held accountable. If not in a Nuremberg-style trial, then surely when you meet your maker. And what will you say then? How will you justify your actions? I know you all feel like you're up against a wall, but you're not alone. There's an army of us out there. We showed you that Saturday. And if this plea falls upon deaf ears, I ask you, when all the illegals have been deported and they start deporting the trans people, will you say anything then? What about when segregation returns? Or they start deporting atheists? Will you remain silent then? Where is that shining light on the hill that Reagan spoke so fondly of, where anyone can become an American? You have to stop this madness, or this republic, this grand experiment, will fail. We've already lost our place as the leader--
So thank you for your comments. Devin Hendricks?
Yo, how's it going? First, I want to, I didn't know that that was happening with the SCAT bus situation. So I've been riding the bus all my life. I know this lady right here, and drive me to school and stuff like that. And when people don't need it, you know. And I just wonder about the old people that don't really know how to work and get on an Uber, you know what I mean? How they going to do it? So I would like to know more about that, too. Second, still see we hate, we talking about this hate about these immigrants, man. I never write nothing because, but I see people spending time on writing, man. They wasting their time because nobody cares, for real. Nobody cares, the hate that y'all give. Last but not least, we got to talk about the youth. We got to talk about the gun violence that's happening. I want to give a shout-out to Springfield PD for walking with us. I love y'all for that. This is a community, and I love this community, and the community is a loving community. But if we want to change the future, we have to change the minds of these youths. And I heard somebody say something about Deion Green, the last meeting. That guy is out here really boots-to-the-ground. Every day, Washington DC, everywhere over in America. You get what I'm saying? And he's really with these youth every day. Bad youth, youth that nobody would mess with. You know what I'm saying? And these are the ones that, we get into them, we could change the gun violence. You know what I mean? We got to change the way they thinking. So definitely let's invest more time and attention in our youth. Yeah. That's about it, though. Springfield's strong, for sure.
Thank you. Rhonda Moore?
I'm Rhonda Moore from Dayton Road on Springfield, Ohio. And I'm really concerned because I worked for this SCAT bus company for 31 years as a bus driver. And I'm retired. I retired two years ago, but I am still about the city. I went around getting petitions because Uber is going to charge us $6 an hour. I mean, $6 a ride. And the bus company, bus, only charges a dollar a ride. And these people can't afford to pay $6 each way. And it's not, it's just the elderly, the people who goes to work. I mean, even though you work, you don't make that much money. And I'm really concerned because you said that you would go to, you would hold a meeting. My brother lives in a nursing home, and I'm there every day. And they had no idea until I brought that petition up to have them sign that you guys were even changing to Uber. And I'm really concerned because there's going to be a lot of hurting people not being able to get in and out of places because elderly people don't know how to use-- most of the people that rides the bus don't even have a credit card. So how are you going to prepay for a bus ride for $6 at that when it's very-- and especially the people living in the nursing home, they got limited income as that. And they can't afford $6 an hour. I mean, $6 a ride. A dollar is sometimes hard for them to come up with. And I think you need to just keep it the way it is and have bus system, dollar a ride. And that's what I'm here to say. Thank--
Thank you. Wes Fabian?
Thank you for these moments to speak. Doing justice is what you do, and it's not easy. I wish to express my appreciation for our state and national representatives, and particularly to the commission, as well as to all civic leaders and public servants of our city, of our county, and of the township. I would add also a word of affirmation for those who serve on many and varied boards and committees in their capacity. With the tragic events of the past few days, we are more than aware of the sacrifices that can be realized by being willing to carry out responsibilities for the public good. I may not always agree with decisions or positions taken by our leaders. In fact, in some cases, I profoundly disagree. However, it is my hope that whatever decisions are made come out of good faith and good intent. Peaceful and respectful communication in that regard is the standard to be followed. The public trust counts calls for accountability, and we're hearing those calls here this evening, and a willingness to listen, to engage in constructive dialogue, and to act on behalf of all the citizens. While these are times of deep uncertainty for our immigrant neighbors, my hope is that their well-being will be realized for the better of us all. Thanks to the positive endeavors of many in our community, in our wider community, with all of the obvious struggles that are there, we stand at the threshold, I believe, of a promising and bright future. That so.
Thank you. Larry Heard? Larry Heard?
Hello, I am a resident homeowner. Just got that paid off 20 years. Taxpayer, Springfield South High School graduate. And I've been an employee of SCAT for over 20 years. So two months ago, the city of Springfield decided to surprise the most to our customers and to our employees to change over 80 years of fixed route bus service for an Uber-like microtransit. We were told that there would be a public meeting held right here at City Hall that would give us more detail. But that meeting was canceled. And two months later, no one from the city that I know of has contacted any of our customers. No one has contacted any of our employees. No one has gone across the street. There's a bus center right there just to talk to people, get their opinion. Drivers have absolutely no idea what your job status is. Should they be looking for new work? Should they be staying? We have lost several drivers because, well, they have no idea whether or not they have a future. Is the city going to honor its 13C agreement, the drivers' union? What about pay? No one has told us about training. No one has told us about hours. No one even knows that they're going to have their life insurance next month. We have elderly passengers who ask us every day what is going on. And it's frustrating that we have to look at them day after day and say, "We have no idea." Because no one has came over to claim anything. Less more to them. We have elderly passengers who want to know about their wheelchairs. How can I, will I be able to have enough room with a cane? Can I bring my groceries on with my grocery cart? With the new vans? No one has even seen what the new vans even look-- The city, I think, is just, the communication between the city and the passengers has just been very dismal and very frustrating. And all we've been asking for the last two months, riders, far more than drivers, drivers have been pretty patient. Riders have been asking, "Just please give us some answer. If you don't know anything, then tell us you don't know anything. Or at least say something." Thank--
Thank you. Adam Banks?
Hey. Can you please share your plans for protecting and honoring the citizens of Springfield regarding the potential prospective arrival of immigration and military enforcement agents in the community? I understand that you meet with citizens concerned about related topics on Thursday mornings, but for the sake of business, health, education, religious, and other community members who can't attend those meetings but are here this evening or can access this meeting online, can you ease the anxieties of those deeply invested in and concerned for the well-being of Springfield? Immigrants of every shade of the rainbow, of every native tongue, of every country of origin have intellectually, culturally, and economically enriched the city of Springfield. They have endlessly expressed their desire to learn existing customs of the community as well as share their own. They have sought to build bridges, strengthen existing bonds, and lift up everything that we all love about Springfield. A rapid increase in population brought about by whatever group, whether of English origin, Scottish origin, or German origin like the ancestors of William Whiteley and George Rogers Clark and James Lefell. Rapid increase in population naturally creates a higher demand on infrastructure. And, as was the case in the past, we too have benefited when we've recognized the assets and expertise possessed by communal newcomers, not treating folks as problems, but as people. A rapid removal of such people from our community will have enduring negative consequences on the entire population, newcomers and generational residents alike. The mental and physical health of young and old, business operations on the north, south, east, and west side of town, and houses of faith will punitively be impacted in the short term as well as over the years to come. Horror stories of improper arrests are circulating in the community. Tactics of violence, violent escalation saturate social media, and flexes of military might raise concerns, concrete concerns, for our streets and our neighborhood. As commissioners who show up to prayer breakfasts and parades and attend Juneteenth and Flag Day celebrations and offer literacy and health declarations for the well-being of all people in this city, can you share with us a little bit of your hope-filled strategy for resisting such impending doom? Thank--
Thank you. So we're going to have some comments from commissioners. I have a statement that I'm just going to share with you. Then I've asked city manager to go directly and talk about our bus system, the buses. And then we'll have additional comments from commissioners and some answers to many of the questions. Obviously, you know that I've done my best to represent the city in a very humane way when it comes to our immigrant population. My personal opinion, I'm going to speak for myself, is these are human beings that are here. They need to be treated humanely. Whether I agree or disagree with how they got to Springfield, they are here, and they need to be treated fairly. Part of the problem is, and I've said this before, is that the immigration reform has not been touched for many administrations. Not fully, not at all. And the previous administration was very open, so we're talking about influx instead of integration. Current administration swings the pendulum so far to the other side, there's no room for correction, no room for opinion, no room for legitimate ability to see who is actually providing income tax to municipalities, who's fulfilling jobs that weren't being filled before. So we're not able to see those things because of the drastic shift. And so, which gives municipalities, government leaders, who are trying to do the right thing, whiplash because it was one way, and it was another way within months. The city of Springfield will continue to focus on safety and infrastructure. We do not have the staff to stand in the way of federal administration, federal policy, federal staff members coming into our community. They have jurisdiction. So we don't have a plan to stop that. We have a plan to make sure the citizens around are safe. And it's hard to say at the same point, it's the truth. We were just speaking about this, a couple individual commissioners, and we just-- we want to make sure we have the safest outcome for our community. We're concerned about gatherings, as anybody would be, that are unsafe. And our police chief and fire chief are in constant communication with their sheriff to make sure that when these things happen, if they do happen, again, that they are taking every measure. Fortunately, unfortunately, we've had practice because of the fall that we went through as a city. And so our police force, our safety forces, are pretty skilled in how to deal with what could come. And we have had, we are having conversations with multiple agencies, and we're not ignoring the fact that, you know, we're watching the same thing you are. And the fact that the president cannot keep our city out of his mouth means that I know that he's not forgotten us. And so I'm concerned what that outcome will be. So we want to live at peace in Springfield and do the best we can. So that's my opinion, and to share that as a commission. Again, we do, as running municipality, try to do the best we can, okay? Oh, gosh, I can't wait till that hits the news. Anyway, nevertheless, it's the truth. I'm trying to deal with this from a humane way, okay? Jessica? Nevertheless, I mean it, though. I really, I said this in the paper this week, the greatest-- not the greatest struggle, but one of the main struggles we face in our community is the mischaracterization of our city. We are a city with a lot of problems, at the same time, we're a city with a lot of momentum forward. And that is the truth. We don't ignore the problems that we have and the tragedies we've seen within the last month. But at the same time, we are moving forward, and we have to fight for every victory we have. That is our city. I'd like Brian to, I know commissioners have comments, but I'd like Brian to talk about buses. And this doesn't mean, the answers you may or may not get, may not like, but this is the answers we're going to have for you at this time. Brian, on buses?
Yes, Commissioner. So just as an overview of our public transit system. As many urban areas like Springfield across the country, the primary source of funding to provide public transportation is through the FTA, which is a federal program, makes up 80%. is through the FTA, which is a federal program, makes up 80% of our public transit dollars that go in to support the system. We've seen changes in that funding. We've seen where we have had to increase the local dollars to that, actually have doubled the local dollars that have been placed into the program to support public transportation. But with those changes at the federal level, it's also led to communities like Springfield to examine what is the most efficient, effective, and most importantly, sustainable means to provide public transportation to their community. And so many communities have had to look at different models of how best to provide public transportation with the limited dollars that are provided for that as part of those services. Looked back, and there's articles, newspaper articles back to 2023, just found where we're talking about this change in the system. So it's not a, a new, I know many feel like it's a new topic in just in the last couple months, but this has been a discussion, again, as communities like Springfield look to find that efficient, effective, and sustainable method to provide public transportation in the future for their communities. And so the information has been out there specifically. We have gone through a request for proposal process, which, again, started, there was one in 2024, and we did not receive any bids for that system. And so we kind of retooled and looked at it, had conversations with the companies, including the existing company, which is Transdev, that currently operates our system, and found that actually, at the end of 2024, we were informed by Transdev where they were gonna invoke their 90-day clause of getting out of their contract because the current system is not sustainable financially, to them as a company and to us as a community. And so it put even more greater emphasis on the need to adapt and reinvent how we looked at providing public transit in our community. Now, we put the RFP out again and received numerous, well, not numerous, we received three requests or three responses to that, and are in the process of working through that contract. So a contract has not been approved with the new provider, but a new provider was, is being recommended for selection for the microtransit model outside of the Transdev that currently operates the existing system. So that is why a lot of, originally, we were hoping to have the system up and running July 1 of this year, and that is obviously not gonna happen. That's in a couple weeks. We canceled the public meeting because there were things that had to happen and information in that contract negotiation that had to happen before, there was no point of having that meeting without having those details worked out. And so we are committed to continuing to have those communications. We had a work session where the new company did present and actually showed what the vans looked like, so that information has been out there, has been shared, has been provided. ADA, Paratransit, Dial Ride Services that exist today will continue to exist in the future. We will continue to partner with organizations like the Transportation Coordinating Committee that provides funding that helps support elderly and disabled discounted rides, so that they can continue to get some of those, those benefits, even with a new system. A lot was talked about an app being available. Yes, there will be an app, but you will also still be able to call in to schedule your ride. It is a, close to a direct-to-direct, point A to point B service, as to, as opposed to just the existing fixed route system. And there will be a continued marketing and communication strategy to our residents, to the individuals that are utilizing the service, and hopefully growing and expanding the service. And I had, uh... So the public meeting will be something that's scheduled. I know Jason Bye will plan and continues to plan to go to some of the facilities that our elderly folks that utilize the current system are in to explain to them and help them understand how the new system works, but they will have the same access, greater access to public transit in what, again, was evaluated as the most efficient, effective, and most importantly, sustainable method to provide public transportation in a community like Springfield.
So can you answer a couple of questions? I've never heard a $6 per route. I've heard one to two still. Is that true?
In the presentation that the company presented to Commission in work session, they plan to keep at the same rate as currently proposed.
And then, what about to have the staff members that are here, answers on, you know, communication to them about their jobs? Is there any information we can share? Is that our responsibility to share that? Just because I know we have, we get contracts, we vote on them, we look at them for the best of the city, but what about the actual communication with staff members within the bus?
Yeah, so they are currently employees of Transdev. So the, the new company would love to have those conversations, but until they're under contract, they cannot have those conversations with existing employees.
So by contract, there's a reason why?
Because they are Transdev employees. They are not City of Springfield employees.
And then the funding on, on how the buses are funded and have been funded is, by percentage, the city pays for how much? Could you repeat that?
Yeah, so FTA is approximately 80% of the money that's allocated. The 20% that we pay is approximately $400,000 annually.
For public transit.
And as you heard, commissioners, we have to, as a community, other communities, really evaluate public transportation systems and their sustainability. As you heard from the tax budget presentation, we have to look at the core services that we're providing. Certainly, public transit is something that we want to be able to provide our residents, but we're also, as you, as we've seen, federal funds being cut. We don't know what the future of FTA funding looks like, and that could have a major impact or play a major impact on our abilities to provide and offer public transportation.
So the reason your staff looked out, looked for opportunities for public transit is so we can continue to have public transit in Springfield?
Yes.
For alternative opportunities. Is this about buses? Go right, Dr. Hestrop.
Law Director Allen. I believe it would be inappropriate, if not illegal, for any member of the city commission or the city staff to become involved in discussions that are subject to collective bargaining between an employee and employers. Am I correct?
Correct. And when someone's represented by a union, those negotiations need to happen between the union.
So I want to repeat, it would be illegal for the city, since we are not your employers, to become involved in discussion of wages, hours, all of those issues that are part of collective bargaining. And if we were your employers, we would not be able to discuss collective bargaining issues publicly. That's illegal in the state of Ohio. So. Essentially, the contract we will vote on will be a contract, am I not correct, Jill, with a company that operates the bus system, and they in turn will engage in collective bargaining with their employees.
Correct. That's what you present to the commission, is the contract to approve.
Thank you very much.
And I, and I do want to be clear, so the existing company, again, Transdev, who is the operator, we have been transparent and communicating with the management of Transdev, which is who our relation, direct relationship with is, and managing the contract. And so what information they have purveyed to their employees is, is their decision to make.
Well, I just want to empathize with the fact that you just are not really in the know of what's going on, and I hear that, and we all heard that, and, you know, I'm personally, I'm sorry that you've not been better communicated, or I don't think that's really fallen on, on the city's responsibility to do that. At the same point, I empathize with the fact that you've kind of been left out of that. Can you, can you go ahead and make a quick comment?
Guys just need to realize that we do fall under that 13C law, and, and we do fall under that. So, I mean, those are things to think about. You know, I mean, it, it just, and I understand the lack of communication between both facilities or whatever, but somebody could have just told us that you guys were relooking at the contract, because we're in limbo. I mean, still, we still are in limbo, right? Because we don't know...
That's, it's honestly, this is, employers should be communicating these things with you. That's what I'm hearing. The employer should be, okay. So thank you, ma'am. This is, that's, we're gonna, we're gonna be okay. Thank you.
I have a question in regards to this. Will the Transdev employees have the opportunity to apply for the microtransit?
Yes, my understanding is the proposed new company would like to extend opportunities to them to apply, yes.
Can you answer Mrs. Copeland's questions as well? I know that I recently had a associate call Ohio Edison on some streetlights around Madison, and they did come out, and I think once they're told on the streetlights, once they get the number, and it's reported they have 72 hours, they fix it in 72 hours. So it does happen. I didn't make the call, so it wasn't this mayor call, it was just somebody else called on my behalf who didn't know anything, and, and it got taken care of. Go ahead.
Yes, so the best way to report streetlight outages is, again, Ohio Edison is the one responsible for the streetlights. You call the number 888-544-4877. Say the word "streetlight," and then that will, that prompt will direct you, and you can report if you have the number. It sounded like maybe some instances, the number's not there. You can provide cross-street directional for them to be able to understand where that is. But as, as the mayor stated, they do try to respond to those within 72 hours of reporting it. And again, 888-544-4877, and say "streetlight." The other question was on the catch basins and cleaning. Yes, we do try. We have crews that go around and try to keep those and maintain as part of our stormwater system. And you can reach out if there's a catch basin that appears to be clogged or has overgrowth on it. You can reach out to the Service Department at 937-525-5800, and speak with one of the front office staff, and they will be able to take down the information of where that is, and they will provide that as a work order to one of our crews. And then the last question was on the South Center Street fire. I will look into additional information on this specific case, but again, oftentimes on these fires, these are owned by a private property owner. They have property insurance, and depending, and I know in this unfortunate case, there were two individuals that perished, and I do believe they were the homeowners, so it might be an estate case and so forth, where the property insurance and so forth is trying to clear that up. But we have to wait for that private property owner insurance to take effect and impact because they are ultimately the ones that will do the cleanup, the demo, and so forth. And so I will look more into this to see if we have any information on the private property owner insurance, and if that is being followed through with and taken care of.
And speaking to the zoning on Chris Michaels, I know that the developers is very much intending on having residential homes and selling those. There's nothing, he does, he's not gonna...
Yeah, the R2 that was mentioned, I am not aware, I'm not gonna speak for the township and why that information was provided, but when the property, if it is voted to be annexed into the city, it would take on city zoning classification. It would no longer take on the township, which the R2 is a township zoning designation. And again, it would be residential, low density, or, or RLD is spelled out in the code, which is single-family detached units.
Comments from commissioners? Commissioner Houston?
Um, I, just two quick things regarding the annexation, the Eastview Heights. Between last meeting and this meeting, I personally spoke with a developer. He does plan on doing single-family homes, and they will not be super expensive. I want, I know he wants to sell them between $200,000 and $300,000, which is, in this day and age, unfortunately, affordable for a new build. But I, I just wanted to communicate that. And then another comment was made, I'd like to speak on regarding immigration. The city of Springfield never was and has no plans to be part of welcoming America. If you do a quick Google search on their website, we're not listed as a certified welcoming city. We don't pay any fees to their organization. We never got certified. We are not part of their organization, regardless of a resolution in 2014. And to second that, our law director, Jill, called them this past fall, and we are, again,
Okay, I have a few things. I want to thank the citizens that reached out after the last meeting with additional resources of activities for kids as it keeps coming up. There's a lot of opportunities happening in the community, such as mentioned previously, through National Trails and Parks, Springfield Promise Neighborhood has several resources. United Way and the library both have robust lists on their website for reference as well. I was also reminded of several vacation Bible schools happening this summer. I want to thank Logan Cobb's for her work on offering the opportunity for citizens to attend the open discussions on the CBG dollars and how sharing their opinions on prioritizing resources through, we also had the survey out. So I look forward to hearing more information back on, on that. And then I know Mayor Rue mentioned it, but congratulations to the Springfield Fire Department, Springfield Police Department, the city staff, and mostly the citizens on their new community asset as we open the new fire station today on the east end. I also want to recognize the importance of the transit drivers. I look forward to an update sooner than later. I can certainly emphasize, or empha, empha, emphasize your frustration as you feel like you're in limbo. I would like to offer an opportunity to jump on a bus and speak to the customers and, and listen to some of their concerns, so hopefully I can, you know, bring some of those back to the city and maybe bridge a gap, find some more information for them. So I'm offering that up. If there's an opportunity to do a ride-along, I'm in. And then I want to share that the Springfield City School District Summer Food Program, the free daily lunch for students 18 and under, started June 2. It runs through August 1, so Monday through Friday, and it's closed on Independence Day. But this, the locations are at Snow Hill Elementary, 11:30 to 12:30. Horseman Elementary, 11:30 to 12:30. Ronaz Lunch, 1 to 2. The Library Main Branch, Lunch, 1 to 2. Snyder Park Oval Shelter House, Lunch, 1 to 2. Roger L. Evans Community Substation, Lunch, 1 to 2. And Springfield High School foyer outside, Lunch, 11 to 12. And again, that is the summer food program, free daily lunch for students 18 and under. The food is only available for kids, and food must be consumed on-site. It started June 2, and will run through August 1, Monday through Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rue. In terms of the federal and state reductions, I have no news to report to my colleagues. We stand at a loss of a little over $4 million here in Springfield and Clark County. However, with the Conference Committee work underway at the state level, this is where representatives of the House of Representatives and representatives of the Senate at the state level, this is over in Columbus, they get together and try to work out the difference in the two bills that they have respectively passed on the budget. Assuming they're successful in working out their differences, they then take them back to the House and back to the Senate, and if both those bodies approve the change made, then it's sent to the governor, Governor DeWine's action. They either sign a veto part of it, because he has what's called an item veto. He can say, I like all of this, but I don't like this. So he can do that. So he can do that, and then they'll do further consideration. That's happening. Same process is happening at the federal level. So we're getting very close of finding out. The House has one bill, the Senate another, and they're trying to work it out in a conference committee. Assuming they do, it goes back to the House in Washington, DC, and back to the Senate in Washington, DC. And if they approve it, it goes to the president. But unlike the governor, the president has to approve the whole thing or nothing at all. He has no line item veto. So it will be very interesting to see how all of this plays out. So stay tuned. We've we dealt with gun violence again this week, and I'd ask Brian you to bring forward a report in terms of what the city has done. And Commissioner Tack has provided some additional information. But I understand you have a great idea to even bring more information to the community.
Yes, and so commissioners, just as it relates to the last meeting, we talked a lot about investments in our parks and our recreational programming and so forth. And so the July 1 city commission meeting, Leanne Castillo will present a work session on Clark County Park District and the investments that have been made specifically in the parks in our community and as well as in the programming throughout the the summer and beyond. And then July 15, I have asked Chief Allison Elliott and Sheriff Chris Clark to do a presentation to talk about the collaborative efforts that the two agencies are working on together to help with the violence that we're seeing.
One final comment. I want to congratulate everyone involved in the planning, instruction, and now use of our new fire station. This is the second one we've put online. And as the mayor pointed out, for the first time in 50 years, we've built some new fire and police substations and stations. So congratulations to all involved. It was a great team effort. And we look forward to more efficiently and effectively serving the people of Springfield. And with the locations of the new firehouses in particular, we will enhance both fire and rescue services, medical services, and also law enforcement. So congratulations to everyone involved. Thank you.
I do want to share out just another resource that Dion Green had shared with me. The Fudge Foundation is running a summer camp, and the dates are June 10 through July 27. The start time is 9:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the location is 901 South Center Street. And to RSVP, please go to www.fudgefoundation.org. And also, I wanted to share out that Breaking Free to, I'm gonna, Dr. Mecca, please forgive me on this. She is having a program in her organization this Saturday. Do you know about this, Tracy? Because I'm fumbling, and I should have had this prepared.
There's so many things.
Right, there's so many things. So Tracy, you were getting ready to say something. Can I divert to you and then circle back when I have the information about the summit? Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly mention, I believe the commission, the mayor, city manager, we all recognize the educational opportunities that we have here as we present work sessions. And we know that the citizens sometimes circle back and ask questions that, like the transit, that there was a presentation done recently. And so we're trying to make that easier, easily, easy, accessible for folks to find. And so I just wanted Brian to share what the city is working on with that.
Yeah, so commissioners and community members, we were able to, we can cut out the work session so that it's a separate video and a separate link to that on our YouTube channel. And so whether it's through social media or Facebook page or our website, you can access that. Thanks to Karen and Trent for their work in making those more readily available and easier, because maybe sometimes, like you said, somebody just wants to go back and hear something from a work session. And so they can just go to that video specifically for that work session.
Okay, thank you. I was able to find it at the same time of someone who's clearly watching or is here texted me the information at the same time that I was able to locate it. So I definitely appreciate you. The Breaking Free to Be is hosting a teen summit, and it's going to be held on June 21, okay? It's from 10 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It is located at St. John Missionary Baptist Church at 34 West Pleasant Street. Dion Green, Servant Jermaine Maynard, Brianna Genal, Joe Hunter, our very own Springfield Police Department, as well as Jack Willen Moss will be presenting at this event. And it is incorporating in a workshop model, problem solving, social emotional learning, and all the mental health pieces. So many things that when I'm hearing people say we need to have things for our youth, this is going to be an all-encompassing day. I do want to say that the event is for 8th through to 12th graders. However, there are some people who are like 7th grade. If you think that is appropriate for your child and you understand your child's maturity level, please go ahead and send them. That's directly from Dr. Mecca Marshall. And the children will be fed. All she in her organization is asking for is that you drop your your child off and come back and pick them up at 5:00. She has said multiple times that she's got them, that they will be well cared for and loved in that space for that time. So there are so many spots that are still open, ladies and gentlemen. So please spread that word, and let's get this enrollment up, because it's going to be something that you're not going to want to miss, okay? I appreciate each of you, and thank you for sending me the information.
Thank you. I'm going to need to take a three to five minute break. Sorry for those that are here for the agenda, but we'll be back in three to five minutes to continue with the formal meeting. Going to go continue on with the meeting? Go ahead and take our seats. Okay, we'll go ahead and ask the clerks to continue with first readings by title only.
Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning 0.146 acres at 1109 Kenton Street, Springfield, Ohio, from CC2 Community Commercial District to RM12 Low Density Multi-Family Residence District. Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning 0.21 acres at 1351-1353 South Limestone Street, Springfield, Ohio, from RM12 Low Density Multi-Family Residence District to C N 2 Neighborhood Commercial District. Authorizing the exercise of the city's option to renew the contract with Southern Ionics Incorporated for the purchase of liquid sodium bisulfite for use by the city's wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed $75,200. Authorizing, sorry, authorizing the renewal of the services agreement with Flock Group Incorporated to provide services related to the automatic license plate reader camera system for an amount not to exceed $114,000. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an Amendment B to the engineering services agreement with Black &amp; Veatch Corporation for the Erie Express Pump Station Pretreatment Facility project to increase the agreement in an amount not to exceed $325,294 and for a total agreement amount not to exceed $1,223,307. Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number 3 to the Agreement for Consulting Engineering Services, Concrete Inspection Technical Specification Preparation and Construction Phase Services with Burgess and NiPole Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $63,036 for a total contract amount not to exceed $354,596 and confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from April 1, 2022. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with performance site development for the reconstruction of Taxiway C at the Springfield Beckley Municipal Airport for an amount not to exceed $1,600,200, $1,600,234 in 18 cents. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for construction services with Berger Construction Services LLC for the Snyder Park Weight Station Roof Replacement and Foundation Repairs for an amount not to exceed $119,975. Consent to resurfacing of US 40 from Greenmount Avenue to Burnett Burnett Road, located in the city of Springfield by the Ohio Department of Transportation, identified as CLA US 40 14.14 and further identified by PID #117962, providing for the maintenance of the right-of-way and authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Director of Transportation for the state of Ohio necessary to complete the project. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a community housing development organization agreement with Neighborhood Housing Partnership of Greater Springfield Incorporated in conjunction with the general operation of affordable housing development activities for an amount not to exceed $21,000 and confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from July 1, 2025.
Thank you. I'd like the city manager to go ahead and explain some points on first readings, please.
Yes, commissioners, the first two items are the public hearings of the rezoning cases that we heard earlier tonight. The next item then is the contract for the purchase of liquid sodium bisulfite. This helps remove the chlorine that remains. So chlorine is used as the disinfectant in the wastewater treatment process. And before it goes out, we pull out that excess chlorine. That's a 5% increase over last year. But of note, we usually spend about a third of that annually. But, you know, in case we would need more, we want to make sure the contract covers that. The next one is the flock cameras. So we've talked a lot about the flock cameras and just the tool that that is in our community and helping us be proactive and helping solve crimes. And so this is the renewal of that services agreement. So this is not to add any additional at this time, but this would continue that license, that software package that's required. The next one, commissioners, you approved a couple meetings ago, a project for the Erie Express Pump Station Pretreatment Facility Project. And Black &amp; Veatch is that consultant where they will help us with that construction management services when we begin that construction project. Similar, we utilize Burgess and NiPole to help with our concrete inspection, technical preparation, construction phase services for the concrete projects that are going on at the water treatment plant currently. And then jumping down, we have the reconstruction of Taxiway C at the Springfield Beckley Municipal Airport. What's great about this is we are able to leverage additional federal and state funding back to our community to help with this asset. And so we only have a 5% match in this total project, which is about $80,000. We are then entering in. So many have been waiting for us to be able to have the Snyder Park Weight Station Roof Replacement and Foundation Repairs complete. So the Snyder Park Weight Station was damaged. And so we've been working. We've bid the project and received no bids. And testament to Leanne and Brad, who have just been out there trying to work and try to find contractors. It's a small enough project that not very many people were interested in that amount, especially with all the paperwork that goes into getting a project like that done with government funding. And then consenting to the resurfacing of US 40 from Greenmount to Burnett. This is part of the state's urban repaving program. And so we do have a match piece to this, but it's consenting to them doing this work, and that matches approximately $154,000. And then the final first reading as part of our federal entitlement programs, identifying CHODOs, which are the community housing development organizations in our community. community, uh, is a big part of that, and our CHODO in this case is Neighborhood Housing Partnership of Greater Springfield and and kudos to them, they just uh, completed the project on Clifton Court, bringing additional affordable single family homes online, um, and so they do, do great work in our community uh, as it relates to affordable housing.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners on first readings only? Dr. Estrada?
Given the discussion that we had uh, about our financial situation, actually, I guess this is a question for my colleagues as well as staff. Would it be possible, or how much work where we've got money involved, I'm not talking about the zoning, but where we have money involved, how much work would be involved to identify if this is federal funding and how much, how much is coming out of the general fund? Because we have different fund. Um, the general fund pays for most police and fire. The water and wastewater fund is a different deal. It's paid for by all of you who use city water and use the city sewer. Is that possible? So we paint a picture of what we're spending out of the general fund because somebody, I think, could rightfully look at this tonight and say, my guys, you guys just said, and you said it, Brian, on item 15825, you're, you just said you were broke and you're spending 1.6 million on a taxiway at the airport. Okay? That doesn't make sense to me. Until you said, hell, we're spending actually only $80,000 on it and getting federal money that raises the total to 1.6 million. So I, I think it would help people to understand and help us to understand, but I don't really know how much work's involved for you and Katie in terms of trying to break that out.
So uh, commissioners, typically in the RCA's, the request for commission action, uh, the department that is submitting that action does identify uh, when there's costs involved, where those uh, what fund, what program, whether it's a grant, federal, state, that those funds are coming from. So I can work with uh, staff on how we could uh, better identify that on the actual agenda.
That'd be great. I just think it would help educate our community and all of us, uh, so people don't think we're out there just talking out of both sides of our mouth. Thank you very much.
To be fair, it's one of the reasons I wanted Brian to go over these, so he did, I wanted him to read through these for the specific reason to say 5% of the runrise, runways being paid by the city. So that's another reason why we ask questions on first readings. Any other comments from first readings, the audience? We'll continue with second readings.
Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning 15.43 acres at Zero, St. Harris Pike, Springfield, Ohio, from RS5 Low Density Single Family Residence District to RM12 Low Density Multi-Family Residence District.
So moved?
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrada?
I'm amazed we have two addresses, both with zero on the agenda tonight. I did not even know we had an address called Zero. Thank you.
Comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning 1.06 acres at 791 Woodbine Avenue, Springfield, Ohio, from M2 Heavy Manufacturing District to RS8 Medium Density Single Family Residence District.
A move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Accepting the application for annexation of certain territory containing 2.461 acres more or less in Springfield Township and commonly known as the Zero Maplewood Avenue Annexation Area to the city of Springfield, Ohio.
A move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing an additional expenditure of $30,610 for the three-year contract with Windstream for telephone services at various city facilities for a total amount not to exceed $163,092.52 for the three-year term.
A move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Amending ordinance 91-90 passed March 12, 1991, and commonly known as the codified ordinances of the city of Springfield, Ohio by repealing and replacing chapter 196 entitled Municipal Income Tax on Earned Income in its entirety.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Next, our emergency ordinances required a super majority vote, that's four or more.
Adopting the tax budget of the city of Springfield, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026 and submitting the same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Providing for supplemental appropriations within various funds and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city to retain membership in the Ohio Benefits Cooperative Incorporated Regional Council of Governments, participate in its OBC Medical Purchasing Cooperative, and authorizing the city manager, law director, director of finance, and human resources director to do all things necessary for compliance with the OBC bylaws and the Jefferson Health Plan Agreement, all to provide medical and prescription drug coverage benefits for the city's employees for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, authorizing expenditures necessary to fulfill the city's obligations under the said bylaws and JHP agreement, finding a real and present emergency pursuant to section 145.02 of the city's codified ordinances and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a plat agreement subdivision development between the city and Fountain Village LLC for the Fountain Village Development and authorizing the city manager, law director, and finance director to do all things necessary to implement the said plat agreement and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I know we've already adopted a plat agreement for this subdivision, correct? Is there a change?
This is the actual plat agreement. Uh, the developer decided to move forward uh, with the plat agreement at this time, which allows him then to record the plat of the subdivision and then that establishes the fee simple lots that can be then sold.
Thank you. Never mind.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the execution and delivery of a cooperative agreement with the Dayton Montgomery County Port Authority and Springfield AAL LLC in connection with the development and financing of a multifamily residential rental assisted living facility in the city of Springfield to be known as Belmont Assisted Living and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Very, uh, very glad about this project. Excellent development opportunity for that area. Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with A&amp;B Asphalt Corporation for the South Belmont Avenue CDBG paving project for an amount not to exceed $491,453.12 and declaring an emergency therein.
A move.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement number 42801 with Carpenter Marty Transportation Incorporated for the CLA CR351/509-10.23/2.09, also known as CLA Springfield Resurfacing 2027, for an amount not to exceed $15,512 and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrada?
I was just wondering where exactly this is going.
Yes, uh, so commissioner, this is working with our uh, design engineer to prepare for the resurfacing on Selma Road from approximately Spring Street to the South Corporation Limit and East Main Street from approximately Spring Street to Green Mount Avenue.
Excellent. Both need help.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction and maintenance agreement with Indiana and Ohio Railway Company for the modification of the Simon Kenton Trail Bridge above the railroad at no cost to the city.
A move.
Been moved and seconded. Just pay attention to those last five words, no cost to the city. Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Clark State College to provide supplemental police services for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, and authorizing the city manager, finance director, law director, and chief of police to do all things necessary and execute all documents they deem necessary to implement the said agreement and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Um, we did have one first reading added to the agenda that I didn't read earlier, so let me read that. Authorizing the purchase of one SCBA compressor from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $104,703 through Sourcewell pursuant to the Sourcewell Contract Purchasing Cooperative Program in accordance with the provisions of section 9.48 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Percerities don't, percerities don't take action tonight, we'll continue on.
Yep.
I, I, I would like to know what an SCBA compressor is.
Yes, so these are the, uh, this helps fill the air tanks, uh, that our firefighters use, uh, with the oxygen, and specifically, this is for station five, uh, which is going to be the new home of box 27, and box 27 helps us with filling this.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Next two items have been added. Appointments, consenting to the appointment of Molly Baldwin to the city planning board.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commissioners? Thank you, Molly, for willing, be willing to serve.
I was getting ready to comment that, so I wanted to second that. Thank you, Rob.
From the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Appointing Amanda Richardson to the Springfield Historic Landmarks Commission.
A move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners?
I wanna say thank you to Amanda for her service to the city.
Yes. From the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Their motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?